Morning, everybody. August fourth, Commissioners Meeting, ready to start? And we get a roll call attendance.
Here.
Tommy Lawson.
Here.
Scott Bell.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We first off to approve the minutes from July fourteenth, July twenty-first. And we have a special meeting that will approve the minutes on from July twenty-eighth.
I just had one comment on the July twenty-eighth special meeting. I would propose that we strike the last line under new business because it talks about an agreement that was made in that meeting, but the sentence right before that says there was discussion, but nothing was decided. So I would move that we approve the minutes with that correction.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same side. This is consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. New business, new or amended human resources policy. Lisa Breder and Amber.
Lisa is home ill this morning, so she asked me to present this to you guys. This is information from the Compensation Committee that we have given the okay to move forward with as long as you guys give approval. On the HSA, Boone County offers HSA contributions to full-time employees enrolled in the high deductible health plan. You must be enrolled in the high deductible health plan, completed the HSA direct deposit form, the know your numbers wellness screening, which will be given more information, I open enrollment from Amber, and continuous enrollment throughout the calendar year to be eligible. They will be distributed over twenty-six pays once the council gives their approval. Married, full-time employees of Boone County must be enrolled in one shared health insurance plan, so both individuals cannot have separate health insurance plans to be eligible for the county's portion of the HSA. The HSA contributions end in the pay period when employment terminates. Employees are responsible for ensuring they meet IRS eligibility for HSA contributions. And Boone County may amend this policy at any time based on regulations and plan changes. And currently, we do not have a formal HSA policy, so that's why we're asking you guys to give approval for one.
So the main difference is, oh, we don't have one, obviously. We're doing, we don't have one, but one of the things that changes is having the health insurance over the pay periods versus what we're doing currently. So I will make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same side.
The other one is the bereavement policy Amber brought to the Compensation Board a couple meetings ago. The differences are family members covered for five days, includes, the present, presented policy includes current in-laws, step-grandchildren in the five-day leave category. It does not mention in-laws or step-grandchildren for the five-day leave, so she's wanting to add that. Also wanting to add for the three-day leave, step-grandparents, current spouses' grandparents, grandparents or step-grandparents, half-siblings, step-siblings, and half-siblings, stepbrother or stepsister for the three days. The rest of the family is what it's supposed to be, I think. The presented policy requires bereavement leave to be used on consecutive calendar days unless approved otherwise by supervisor and HR. And the presented policy requires supervisor approval for non-consecutive leave and mandates the documentation of that approval from your supervisor be presented to HR.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amber. New business, legal issues. That's the one.
We have one maintenance bond release for Trailside Section 2A and 2B, total amount of one hundred forty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side.
Second item is Resolution 2025 dash oh-seven authorizing petition to establish regional sewer district for Boone County. In your packets, you were presented with a petition. This came from BSC. This has to be done both with the Commissioners and with the Council, so Council will see a resolution next week at its meeting. And this authorizes, this is to authorize us to file the petition as step one to have the regional sewer district. So this doesn't actually create, this is simply, this authorizes us to file the petition to start the process.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2025 dash oh-eight, amended resolution establishing a small purchasing policy for Boone County. You just voted on this at the last meeting. It's before you again. For my mistake, I will acknowledge the error. I failed to include the four-H group, four-H fairgrounds group as one of the purchasing agents. That was just a lack of understanding of how they receive funding. So now the director's going to be included in that.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same side. Next up is request to recognize September as childhood cancer awareness month. Stacy McLean.
I'm here on behalf of Stacy. She came in this morning. We are requesting authorization for meaningful initiative that will raise awareness for childhood cancer during the month of September. Specifically, I'm proposing that county properties be illuminated in yellow lighting throughout the month and that signs be displayed on the courthouse lawn to support this cause. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is served annually in September as a time to honor and remember children and families affected by these devastating diseases. And to support those, you continue to fight against childhood cancer. Yellow is recognized color of childhood cancer awareness symbolizing hope, courage, and resilience in the face of these challenges. By lighting county properties in yellow and displaying signs prominently on the courthouse lawn, Boone County can visibly demonstrate its commitment to supporting children and families impacted by cancer. This initiative will not only raise awareness within our community, but also serve as a reminder of the ongoing need for research, support services, and improved treatments for childhood cancers. I kindly request that County Commissioners consider approving this initiative for this upcoming September.
Okay. Could you state your name, please?
My name is Marion McLean.
Marion McLean, okay. All right, very good. Well, thank you for that.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same side.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Health Action Council, HAC terms amendment. Amber, check.
Hello. So this is something that we're already doing in partner with the Health Action Council through UMR. We get a discount on per member per month rates. This is just putting it into our plan document, so I just am looking for approval formally.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Thanks, Amber. Next up is Ordinance 2025 dash zero-eight and Ordinance Amending from AG, or AG to I-1. The zone map for the R.L. Turner property, eight point seven five acres on State Road thirty-nine South. Kent Branson.
Good morning. My name is Kent Branson. I'm an attorney practicing two twenty-five West Main Street here in Lebanon, and I represent R.L. Turner. Also with me here today is Adam Owens, the President of R.L. Turner, and Chris Kerrier, who's the Chief Financial Officer. I've been asked to just present this, introduce this application. I don't intend to make any arguments in favor of the matter, but it is a petition filed a few months ago. We appeared before the Plan Commission at its early July meeting, seeking their recommendation for a change in this zoning. It's eight point seven five acres in the twenty-one-hundred block of State Road thirty-nine South. The Plan Commission heard the matter and recommended against the rezoning by a vote of four to one with two members absent. Since that meeting, we have amended a bit our proposed commitments if the rezoning would be approved. Just so you know how it's changed a bit, they've been strengthened for your information. The first commitment is the same, that is, this is limited to the use as a general construction company headquarters and warehouse. If the property would ever be sold, it could not be sold to another I-1 use. It would have to remain essentially as an office and warehouse for a general construction company. They've also committed for a period of ten years following the rezoning. They will not seek any change of zoning of any other land they may own in that area. They have five acres immediately to the north of this property. They would commit for ten years that there would be no change of zoning sought for that. And in the event they ever buy any other land adjacent to this property, they would agree to the same commitment. The burms and landscaping that are contemplated as part of this project have been made clear that the details of those burms and landscaping details would be approved subject to the veto power of the Area Plan Commission. So whatever they would think in terms of the height of the berm, the shape of the berm, the locations of the berm, the materials that would go on the berm, plantings, trees, vegetation of any sort, would have to be approved by them. We've added some language with regard to signage. There would be no digital signage, no electronic signage allowed on the property. There would be no blaring lights, no blinking lights, no changing billboard-type signage in front of the project. It would be a monument, it would be a monument, which is a ground-level type sign with the name of R.L. Turner and just lit up with a standard bulb. There would be no other illumination, electronic illumination on the property other than directional lighting, security lighting, and things of that nature. And that lighting would have to be downlighting as contemplated by your zoning ordinance. These commitments would be binding not only on the current owners of the property, which is R.L. Turner, but any future owners of the property or any occupants or tenants of that property. So those are the supplemental commitments we've made and put in writing and were prepared to sign should the Commissioners approve the rezoning. And if the Commissioners have any other requests to be included, we'd be happy to consider those and probably make them if that was something that you felt was important. Other than that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kent.
I think, I don't think, I think, well, I'll say it again, I think it's a good project, but I believe that we need to table this. So, Mr. President, I'll move to table.
Okay.
This consideration.
I, on a little discussion note, I've been out visiting neighbors in the area and talking to them, and it seems that when I bring things up that you've proposed that you will do, most of the neighbors don't know all of them, some of them are what's going on. So I think, I think it's a good idea to table it and let everybody get together and get the neighbors completely educated. That's, because there's too much right now up in the air and speculation. LEAP has ninety percent of you scared to death in this room, probably for a good reason, but this is not LEAP. But I think it's a good idea to table it as well.
Yeah, I actually brought some maps because I wanted to make some comments regardless of what was going to happen this morning, so if you could bring those up.
We need a second on that motion.
Oh, I'll second your motion, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim, I'm sorry. Oh, there we go.
So I was, I wasn't feeling well, so I was not at the APC meeting. I listened to the meeting live and then I watched it again last Friday. And I didn't really see the exhibits, couldn't see the exhibits on the video that were presented at the APC meeting, but I did listen to everything else. So kind of, this is actually a City of Lebanon map. And so it shows, you know, kind of west of town there, the size of the LEAP PUD. And then the GI, which is General Industrial, kind of on the north side of town, is the Eli Lilly property, which is essentially part of LEAP, but it's not part of the LEAP PUD zoning. Kind of on the south side of town, where that blue arrow is, that's pointing to this eight point seven five acres. And as you can see, kind of on the east side of the railroad, there's also a blue triangle there, which is also zoned General Industrial. If you go to the next one, it kind of shows a, zooms in a little bit, showing the same area, that same triangle. The yellow is the eight point seven five acres, and then the, kind of the purple rectangle there is a piece of ground in the county that's evidently was zoned light industrial some time ago, and it has about, it has a forty-five-hundred square foot building on it that's some sort of home, home building business currently. Not sure if that was the original use or not. Also of note, it's not shown on the map, but the city of Lebanon, you correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but I believe we have water main plans that show the water main coming from Whitestown is going to run along two fifty South and then turn north on John Shaw Road, which is the same road on the east side of the, where that blue triangle is. And then it's going to turn west and cut across two hundred South. So water main coming very near to where this property is. So I guess I, I kind of second the comments that were made about, you know, that LEAP has everybody scared, and rightfully so. I don't, well, I'll just reserve my comments about LEAP, but when Kent mentioned in the APC meeting that the, this site was a half a mile from city limits, I was like, you're nuts. And then I pulled this map up and I'm like, well, that's about right. If you take a straight line from the back corner of the property and go to the triangle, it's just barely over a half mile. When you drive down State Road thirty-nine, it's about a mile and a quarter past the railroad tracks. It does kind of feel far. You know, I, obviously I live in Zionsville, I'm very familiar with the current R.L. Turner site. It is, they're busting at the seams. But it's also surrounded by trees. Really, the only, the only way you can even see the site is from Oak Street. I mean, there's a town of Zionsville path that runs right along their property, might even be on your property, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but when you're along that path, you can't even see what's going on in the site because of the trees. I guess I say all of that, it's an existing business, and I would love to see them stay in Boone County and find a location in Boone County. We've received a lot of feedback on this project. Probably most of it is negative, there's some positive. So, one other thing that was mentioned in the APC meeting, there were a number of things mentioned in the APC meeting. One question I do have, your intent is not to use, seek any public money as part of this project, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's another distinguishing feature from the LEAP project. There's public money being used for LEAP, which I don't agree with that either. Anyway, I lost my train of thought, I was going somewhere else. Oh, I know where I was going. On the APC, in the APC meeting, there was a comment, the overlay district was kind of mentioned in passing. And then there were some comments about all kinds of uses that were permitted in the overlay district, but unless I'm mistaken, the proposed use is not contemplated by the overlay district. That doesn't mean there could be an exception, I suppose, I'm not a hundred percent sure how that would work, but, and I guess the other, the other, you know, I kind of compare this to the forty-seven Commons Project, which was right at an interchange, and this, like I mentioned earlier, just feels kind of far, you know? So I kind of see some, some positive aspects and I kind of see some negative aspects. So, you know, I came this morning wanting to make these remarks, not knowing exactly where this was going to go, but I, I agree that I think it's a good idea that we table the project.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lawson?
I think it's, like I said before, it's wise to table this project, to have more discussion. Face-to-face conversations are always the best. And so I think, I think we need to do more of that, and when I say "we," it's all of us.
May I ask a favor? Would you allow this room to be used during normal business hours for such a meeting with the neighbors? And you, if you want to be there, Plan Commission members, if they can be there, I mean, it's either that or finding some other location. If we have to do it in the evening, we'd have to find another facility somewhere. If we can do it during the day, this is convenient, I think, for most people. So if you allow that, we'd be happy to try to set up a time. We don't want to dictate when the meeting has to be, but I can't, I can't pick a date, I have to pick a date, see how many people could be there. We're flexible, we can do it by any time, but we need the time and the date, okay? Or location.
If you would get with Tammy Rose in our office, just make sure the room's available when you want it, and that'd be fine.
And just so we know for planning purposes, if you're going to table it, when would you anticipate putting it back on the agenda, because that affects when we try to meet?
I don't know that we have a specific date, but we can't go over ninety days, right?
That's right.
So it'll be sometime in the next ninety days.
It's actually ninety days from the date of the certification of Plan Commission, which was about three weeks ago.
Yeah.
So you've still got a couple of months if you have to.
Sixty days maximum, basically, with that, that three weeks already added in there, that already takes, basically a month out of it.
I just want to make sure, and I think we want to make sure that everybody is educated on it and can make a sound assessment, so.
July eleventh, twenty twenty-five is the date of certification.
Okay, so October tenth, give or take.
Yeah, give or take, yeah, so. But we've got a motion, a second on the table. To table, is anybody in favor, or anybody in favor of that one? Oh, I guess, let's call the vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same side? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, consideration of legal or engagement of outside legal services for Health Department for remainder of twenty twenty-five.
I move to approve. Oh, sorry, went too soon. I'm moving along, okay. My mistake.
Lisa Yance, Health Department Administrator and Director of Nursing. You have before you on behalf of the Health Board a consideration on engagement of outside legal services for the Health Department for remainder of twenty twenty-five, and you should have the new contract if you choose to approve today.
I couldn't hear the last thing you said.
I said you have the new contract if you choose to approve that today. That's on your agenda.
Now it's proper for me to do that. I move to approve. Got too big of a hurry.
So we've got a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Any discussion yet?
Were you contacted by any Health Department, or not Health Department, Health Board members after the meeting on Monday?
I have not been.
Is that to me or?
So it's to Beth.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I have not been.
Yeah, so we had, we had a meeting Monday just about, I wasn't even really sure what the purpose of the meeting was. I think it was just for Beth to introduce herself to the Health Board, and I mentioned in that meeting that, and this has been discussed at several meetings already, and I mentioned at that meeting that I would like for the Health Board to reach out to Beth to discuss this because, it was reiterated again in the meeting on Monday, that literally the Health Department is expecting on average two hours of an attorney's time. So why, again, I've asked for justification why there needs to be an increase from thirty-five hundred dollars per year to three thousand dollars per month, plus an hourly rate if there's litigation? And I just, I don't, I haven't been provided that justification. You know, the whole idea of hiring an in-house attorney was to save money and be more efficient. Yet there seems to be, it's just not this, there seems to be this concerted effort to continue to want to hire outside counsel when we have in-house counsel that can handle this stuff. I don't know how closely you looked at claims this morning, but we have a claim for over fifty-six hundred dollars on a similar issue where it was represented to us by, a few months ago, by somebody that, hey, this is something that, that our former county attorney was already working on, you know, it shouldn't be much time, I even asked for an estimate of time, you know, the meeting that he was going to need to be at was, was expected to be about an hour. Yet we have a claim for over five thousand six hundred dollars in claims related to that. So I don't feel like we were given full disclosure on that. I did ask for some detail because it was a little bit confusing, but I have the detail and all of that time was spent in the month that that was requested. You know, we've already paid out sixty-eight hundred dollars, which is almost double what the Health Department legal expenses were last year. You know, there's another claim for signing some letter, related SBOA. Why our county, current County Attorney couldn't do that, I don't know. So, you know, you take all that into account and throw another fifteen thousand dollars plus three hundred dollars an hour, I mean, we're looking at a minimum of thirty thousand dollars for outside counsel. Wasn't the whole idea of hiring an in-house attorney to save money? It doesn't look like that's working out too well. You know, there's been mentions about the code and whether the Health Board can just go out and hire their own attorney. Well, the, we have three branches of government for a reason. It's for checks and balances, for this, exactly this kind of stuff. It's not to work together, you know, at, at the people's expense. We're supposed to be here for the people's benefit, and I want to know if anybody's going to vote for this, what benefit are the people getting out of this? what benefit are the people getting out of this?
Are you finished?
Well, we, we got some affidavits related to this item, and I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but it's affidavit of people's supreme power and right to regulate government. And it's, when you read through this thing, number one, it references some notices that we were given about contracts last year, and that we have a fiduciary obligation to manage assets competently and undertake appropriate investigations before making decisions such as entering contracts. So. Unless you're gonna tell people that they don't have the supreme power and the right to regulate their government, I guess I'd want to hear an explanation why we can just approve contracts willy-nilly when, what this tells me, I always like to compare government to a company, right? So we have, we're employees of this government company. And we have employees that are arguing about spending the owner's money, the owner of the company's money. Well now, we have the owner that's been watching this the last several months, and they're, they flat out come and telling us, well, I don't care what you guys are arguing about, that's my money, and I don't want you spending it. That's what this says. So, if, if there's gonna be votes to approve this this morning, I think, I have out explaining the benefit. Because I don't see any.
Are you finished?
For now.
I was at the meeting, the special meeting, uh, there has been discussion back and forth on a county attorney. They want to transition over slowly, for whatever their reasons are, to Beth. The reason we went within-house counsel is to save money, I agree, a hundred percent. And we've saved fifty percent probably of what last year's legal counsel budget was. So, we've made a tremendous savings. Uh, we have one of our departments, one of our employees, and we look at, this is the business that is, and they're saying they want to do something a little different for whatever their reasons are. And I agree, let's, let's give them the contract till the end of the year, get the transition made over, and we'll, we'll go forward from there.
So has the Health Board talked to you about what this transition looks like, because how is there a transition if they won't even meet with our current in-house attorney, Scott?
Well.
Your actions need to start matching the words that are coming out of your mouth about saving money.
I think we are, I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Everybody in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same so?
Aye.
Carries, two to one. Okay. Consideration of Project Twenty Twenty Four dash zero eight, Liquid Road, various locations.
Nick Farb, County Highway. Uh, this is a project, we brought the construction agreement to the last meeting for the, uh, liquid road be applied on various roads, um, in subdivisions. Uh, this specific request is for the construction inspection of that project, so this material uh, has to be applied, and there's a, there's a cure time, and it's laid multiple layers in front of residential homes, and there's some collaboration that has to be done with the residents to get, um, them access during this process. Uh, so the request is for the execution of Task Order sixty-one with BFN S D, uh, construction inspection while this work is occurring. Uh, the dollars are a part of the appropriations that we already have in the road preservation program for this year.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same so?
Uh, the next item I have is a Boone County Bridge ninety-three, uh, it's a quote for, uh, doing repairs. This is not a major project, but it is, uh, contractors in the area paving, you know, and resurfacing, and we saw as an opportunity to get a bridge, a deck resurfaced while they're in the area, uh, so the request is for this quote to be executed from milestone to, uh, mill asphalt, place a new membrane on a concrete deck, and then put new asphalt down, the total amount is not to exceed twenty-eight thousand and fourteen dollars, uh, this will be paid out of uh, funds that have already been appropriated, we're gonna move to the bridge repairs line in Boone Bridge.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same so?
Uh, the next one's an update to an ordinance, uh, the side-by-side or UTV or off-road vehicles that are allowed on Boone County, uh, maintained roadways, the ordinance number is twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Uh, worked with Beth to get this in draft form. Uh, their, the, the original ordinance that allowed the side-by-side vehicles, um, is overly vague, uh, we've found it allows anything that's classified by the state of Indiana as an off-road vehicle, and doesn't specify a lot of s- more safety equipment that's necessary to operate off-road vehicles on roadways mixed with regular traffic. So the new ordinance has, uh, new requirements, uh, the permit's not changing, there's not a change in the years that the permit's good for, uh, still requires the DNR permit prior to getting a permit from our department, but this would be the first reading only, is my understanding, uh, would like, anybody who puts any feedback or any concerns or questions, please reach out. Um, it is in draft form, I have sent it to Tony, uh, Chair's Department for them to review also, to make sure there's, you know, things that'll work with them, uh, but wanted to bring this to the board for consideration.
So is this considered the first reading of it, or do we need to have that at the next meeting?
No, this is first reading.
Okay, just want to make sure that.
I'll make sure notice gets in the paper for the public hearing for the next session.
Was the draft version a link on the agenda?
Yeah, the, the final version that we agreed on, yes.
So if there's any changes to it, we'll get that posted back so people can then review. That was all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Lisa's out, we have Compensation Committee Updates next, Debbie, you?
I gave them a update when you guys did the approvals, that's all we had, we have another meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Insurance Committee Updates, Commissioner Byer.
Yeah, I've been taking, uh, obviously the, the insurance stuff is kind of confusing, we have data and analysis that was done by Henriott. I've been taking a number of questions about that, and we'll continue to do so, so, so if anybody has questions, uh, feel free to reach out.
Are you finished?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Staff Reports, Area Plan Commission. Mr. John Merson.
Good morning, John Merson, President of the APC. On Thursday, we had our first kickoff session for the Steering Committee of the Comprehensive Plan and the Road Safety Update, and, uh, we are seeking interested people who would like to be a part of this decision-making process. Uh, we have the core Steering Committee, but we will have a number of subcommittees that over the next twelve to fourteen months will be crafting individual parts of this plan. So, I'm just standing up here asking that if you are interested, or anybody that you know is interested, you can contact Deb Luzier, the Acting Director of the Area Plan Commission, or you can contact me, and we will, uh, figure out, uh, what committee you would best serve on.
Thank you very much, sir. Capital Investments. Max? Health Department. Human Resources. IT Support? Oh, do you have more, Nick?
Uh, just a couple of road closure updates.
Oh, okay.
Uh, State Road Seventy-Five did open over the weekend, so north of, uh, Dover, north of three fifty, there's south of Thorntown, that road did reopen. Four Twenty-One has reopened south of thirty-two. But with all good news comes some bad news, you're getting ready to close Four Twenty-One, uh, closer to Forty-Seven for a small structure, so we're moving those projects around, and it's actually gonna close as soon as Two Sixty-Seven does reopen, now by Fayette. These are all state road projects, uh, we do have a local road project, County Road Five Hundred East reopened Friday also. And we have a small structure project on Five Hundred South between One Hundred East and Two Hundred East that's gonna be closing this week. Uh, so there's a lot of projects still ongoing. Um, we were able to get a couple of bridges on the Polymeric Overlay Project uh, already completed, we got a couple more coming up, one of which is on Two Hundred South between Four Twenty-One and Nine Fifty East, and the other one's on, uh, Two Hundred East between Seven Fifty and Eight Hundred South. Those will both be sh- rather short-term closures, uh, they've been taking about, about a week to get those done, depending on how much concrete patching needs to be done before they apply that, that treatment. Uh, just wanted to give you the heads up on that, also, State Road Thirty-Nine is getting ready to get chipped and sealed north of Forty-Seven, Indup's sent out a press release about that, and there's also gonna be chipping seal on Forty-Seven from I Sixty-Five towards Thorntown. Just giving you a heads up on a couple of those other Indup projects.
Before you leave, this is off the cuff here, you don't know anything about it, but they're bringing Ronald Reagan Parkway north, and it's coming up to a thousand north in Hendricks County, which is eighty-sixth Street, if you go for the far north west. But when they get to that, they're gonna improve the road on a thousand north to State Road Two Sixty-Seven, and that's gonna put all that Ronald Reagan traffic, ninety-five percent of it, on Two Sixty-Seven, or, do we have any kind of a plan for that that you know of?
So the, the Ronald Reagan plan was developed in conjunction with Hendricks County. Um, we're, we're got to the final document approval, which is what's needed for federal funds, I don't want to get into weeds too much, but we did collaborate with, with Hendricks County several years ago, uh, to get the route established, to have an environmental document where we could do construction. Since that time, there's been some changes in the area with annexations, uh, Whitestown has a s- a section of it, um, part of it's within rural Zionsville's planning jurisdiction. Uh, so we did not move forward, uh, funding source for construction dollars or further development of the plans wasn't available, and it has not moved forward. Same remains in our thoroughfare plan to be, you know, be a route, be connected at some point in the future, but there has not been any, uh, push forward to, um, drive that project toward construction, there has been some recent collaboration with the town of Zionsville and Town of Whitestown, um, on, in the, in the engineering departments, the road departments talking about what that would look like, or what the, the challenges might be. So, there is communication about it, I don't know what the next steps are, or plan forward. We maintain the roads within that rural area, we don't control planning and zoning along that route. Um, our kind of comments anytime something comes up with a developer, because we, we do provide comments, is protect the route, and when they get built on that route, it is a recorded, um, line established from a thousand in Hendricks County all the way up to Two Sixty-Seven, just near the south of Five Fifty South is kind of the connection, so. Short answer, I don't have one, long answer, don't really know.
I just know that safety on Two Sixty-Seven through Fayette is gonna be horrendous, the Sheriff's Department and Whitestown are gonna go crazy with crashes, so. But I was trying to hopefully get the ball rolling a little bit, or get a push going somewhere to.
I think some communication and, and collaboration with the towns of Zionsville and Whitestown on what that looks like, what we could do, how we could facilitate, how we could help, but we don't have the planning and zoning control, and then a lot of that will come down to funding, so what's gonna drive that is, you know, money. It takes a lot to build a road.
Thank you very much, sir, appreciate it. Okay, uh, you didn't have anything showing, I, uh, Communications, Rettweet.
Rettweet Communications Director, and I wasn't gonna talk about roads, but I, thanks to our friends at the state that have made it impossible to get in or out of Boone County, I had to travel on backroads in a certain county to the north that I won't name. Apparently there's been a civil war up there because their roads appear to have been bombed into submission, so. It, it is amazing to me, the condition, the good condition of Boone County roads, so, uh, congratulations to everybody that is involved with that. I thought I'd take just a real quick moment, we have been doing Facebook a little over three months, I know that was a made a lot of people nervous that we were gonna get back into that thing, so it's, I think, been very successful. Uh, we've had over fifty-five thousand views of our various posts, we've had twenty-six thousand in the last thirty days, so our numbers are triple-digit, exponentially increasing. We've got five hundred and twenty-eight followers, uh, we've got one unfollowed, I don't know who that person was, but apparently they didn't like what we're doing, but I think that ratio is pretty good. Commenting-wise, then, this is what had been a problem in the past, we've had seventy-one comments, there are nine comments that have been auto-hidden, what that means is they don't meet Facebook's, uh, guidelines for commenting. Usually it's when somebody tries to post a picture, you can understand the potential security risk of posting a picture, so folks in the public should know that if they want to post a map or a picture or something, it's not gonna work, Facebook shuts that down. And then we did have a few that were, uh, too far, so, um, for the most part, that's not been a problem. Our biggest single post so far was, uh, just last week, we had eleven, almost twelve thousand views, uh, we posted that Boone County is hiring. So, I, I think that demonstrates the value of doing this, that, uh, hopefully that increased our potential hiring pool to include, uh, good folks, and, uh, so, uh, I'm not sure what the deadline is on the, the hiring thing, but, uh, that was good to see that uh, folks were really interested in looking at that. We've done about ninety posts, we've done a number of videos, uh, just this last week, we went out to the fair. Um, that's not our responsibility to promote, but it, it's a good, uh, community event, and I think it reflects favorably on everybody involved, so we went out and did a bunch of posts, or, uh, videos, uh, Commissioner Pell was there, the sheriff was there, uh, we talked to, uh, Fair Board President Morgan Blackwell, and a bunch of other, uh, folks that have been part of four H for a long time. I even got Commissioner Pell to put on his, uh, construction paper figures, so if you haven't seen that, you may want to check out the, uh, video on YouTube. And we also, uh, highlighted the fun run, the nonprofit showcase. I want to take credit for that, but they had a very successful day of supporting nonprofits, and I'd like to think that we did help get more folks out there, so. Um, I think we're moving the needle in a lot of different ways, and, uh, it's been a worthwhile activity. Uh, we've got content, uh, of course, from the Commissioners, the Clerk's Office, Human Resources, the High, uh, the Highway Department, uh, they are posting every single day, folks are getting that information, and they're doing it in a timely fashion, when something opens, they, they pop that up too. Uh, we've had, uh, City of Lebanon Engineering Department ask us to promote things, so we're, we're expanding. Prosecutor's Office, Boone County Solid Base District, so, uh, I think it's, it's positive, I won't always give you a rundown, uh, I'll certainly let you know, uh, anytime you have a question, but I wanted to take the, uh, first quarter of activity and kind of highlight for both the Commissioners and the public, that, uh, I think it, it's doing well, so we're always interested in, uh, taking, uh, suggestions on how we can do better. Um, but that is all I have, if there's any questions from Commissioners.
Sounds like it's going well to start with.
I think so.
Build it, and they will come.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Fairgrounds.
Good morning, Andrea Hatfield for New Extension, uh, here in Boone County, uh, with the, Count Four H and the Fairgrounds, so just to, you led in perfectly to me to talk about the fair, I do want to back, back up just a moment to the Small Purchase Policy. Thank you for including us, I know sometimes we get forgotten because we're not here in the center of things, um, but our county, our department is actually the Cooperative Extension Service, the County Cooperative Extension Service, so I don't know if it needs to reflect that, because that's the way it was in the budget, so, just as we get that information put through, with the Small Purchase Policy, um, that would be fantastic, four H is one of our programs, um, so we did survive the fair, thank you to all of you that were out there, if you remember, it was super hot, that did discourage, I think, a lot of people from coming, uh, in between the torrential downpours, uh, but we are thankful for all that came, I saw lots of faces in this room out there, and we very much appreciate it all the time that you spent out there. Uh, we appreciated very much the additional media coverage, I would say, um, it's not necessarily expected to be as part of your job, but since we are a county office and part of the county, we do appreciate being included in that, County Communications. Um, shout out to all of our four H volunteers. The majority of our program is run by volunteers, we have a small staff that are amazing, that do help make this happen. Uh, the hours that go into the several weeks leading up to the fair, and then having it open to the public for a week, that's always a, a fun activity for us, but it's a lot of work, so we. So we just appreciate very much all of four H volunteers, the four H council and fair board, our amazing office staff, and then all of you that have supported in any way. And that's, I think, all I have to say. So if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, brings us to public comment. Take your name and address for each one of either kind of talk, please.
My name is Dee Reeves. I live up at sixty-two seventy North State Road Thirty-Nine, area level. Just got a little concern of mine. I'm a motorcyclist. I did a little Google search. There are some counties in Indiana now that have bans about blowing grass out on the roads. I've, in the last few weeks, rode some of these county roads that everybody's just covering the roads with grass. I know it sounds petty, uh, but as a county highway person, I would think they would be involved too, because after they blow the grass up on the road, it runs to the side of the road, it lays there, it rods, it builds up, traps water on the roads, which doesn't do any good for the roads either. It's very, very dangerous. I've lost a friend to grass on the road, so it's not a petty thing to me. Seems kind of petty, but I just thought I'd bring it up and see if there could be something about it done. Uh, the sheriff's department told me this is where I needed to start, so I figured I'd come and voice my opinion. You can do with what you want, but to me, it's littering, if nothing else. It's just littering. It is a hazard. What if somebody blows a tube before up on the road that's full of nails or something? You know, it could damage a thousand-dollar truck tire. You know, pretty petty thing. Somebody could get killed on motorcycle. That's all I have to say. Just wanted to throw it out there to, maybe we could, you know, make sense within the ordinance to keep people from doing stupid things.
Appreciate your-
My two cents.
Anybody else for public comment?
Debbie, I'm going to be a county recorder. Um, I brought this issue up with our county council during the meeting, and I wanted to just throw this thought process out to you guys. If you guys are discussing an issue and it would affect one of our offices, um, right now, I think the way it is is that we can't really speak on it until the public comment, which I understand, but would you consider putting something in your roles that if you guys wanted to ask us a question and have us come up and answer it during that particular issue, that that would be an option? But this would not open it up for us to come up and just say, hey, we want to talk to you about this or that. But for instance, in the council meeting, it was a situation where, um, one of our elected officials, they were discussing a specific office and some things, and she had some thoughts, but she really couldn't say anything until the public comment. And even the council member said it would have been good for them if they could have just asked her those questions at the time. So again, not saying open it up to where we come up for every issue, not that anyone would. But, um, but if you were discussing a specific office or some claims, for instance, you know, if you had, you would be able to ask that person to come up and talk, and then, um, just go back down. So that was, I had suggested it to the council. Some of them thought it was a good idea. I'm just offering that suggestion. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you.
Hey Debbie, you know how I feel on this issue. If somebody wants to get up and speak on an issue, I welcome it. I was prepared to ask for public comment during the rezone. Number one, because I wasn't at the A P C hearing, but if somebody's got something to say about something we're considering, absolutely. So you feel free to get up and talk anytime you would like.
Well, I think that's- I know, everyone here, please do not do that with her. Anyone else but me. But what I'm saying is, is that if you are like, let's pretend like you're talking about something that's going on in my office, and you would have the ability, because I know right now, it's like, I couldn't say, hey, I've got, you could say, Debbie, could you answer this question for me? But that would be the only time I would be able to come up other than public comment, if you were directing something specific to an elected position since, because of the agenda issues. Just a thought for you, you can like, maybe put that ad導力 in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment, yes ma'am?
Peggy Daggy, um, Two Thousand Five West, Two Fifty North, Lebanon. And this is more of a public service announcement. I would just like to remind everyone that the Battle of Barbecue is this Saturday from five to seven in the Wardle Park, and it's the largest fundraiser for the cancer society for the year, and if you can come, please do.
One hundred percent of all the money raised goes to Boone County Cancer-
Yes, one hundred percent of it, so.
It's a great, it is a great amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Oh, John Merson.
Going third, John Merson, Six Nine One Four West, East River Road, Thorntown, Indiana. Just want to address the R L Turner petition. I'm a private citizen. Uh, the overlay district was put in as a guideline for the growth of the county. The overlay was supported by Commissioners Byer and Lawson. You were not a part of it at that time. I think it's a shame you were even considering overturning the viewpoint of the majority of people on the area plan commission. We spent about eight hundred thousand dollars on the overlay district, which was a lot of money, and we are embarking on spending another four hundred thousand on a comprehensive plan. But if we're going to get routinely overridden, I wonder why we're even bothering doing a comprehensive plan. People on the area plan commission thoughtfully and carefully have listened to the views of the people who were impacted. We've looked at it both from an economic standpoint and a social standpoint, and believe that we made the best decision. And so delaying this project, delaying your vote by sixty days or ninety days, does not change the fact that it is a spot rezone, which we try to avoid, and that it does not match the overlay district, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comment.
Just one comment I would like to make. We, when we approved, I think it was kind of a unanimous comment, when the commissioners at the time approved the overlay district, we mentioned that we're going to kind of learn. We recognized that there were potentially adjustments that might need to be made. I don't, this is just me personally speaking. If a proposed development is supported by the majority of the community, then that's really what matters. I mean, we can come up with these plans. These plans are good. Comprehensive plan, overlay plan, those are good. But they're not binding. We need to, it's good to have a plan to say, you know, that industrial's going to go here, residential's going to go there, but that doesn't mean that that's the end-all, be-all. Because I, I, look, I've been, I've been involved in development my entire career, from many different perspectives. As an engineer and a surveyor, I've worked for a developer, I've worked for contractors that build developments, I've worked for a sewer utility, and now I'm in government, so I see it from all kinds of things, and I see what, I just see what goes on. And I'm not exactly sure where I was going with that comment, but I guess my point is, is I've always had an issue with government saying or kind of dictating, this is the use of this land. It's really, it kind of goes back to what I was just talking about earlier. It's, it's really the people that determine what's to their benefit, right? I almost feel like, in some cases, we almost ought to have an election to determine what the best use of a land is, especially if there's lots of people telling us they're not for it, and other people telling us they are for it. That would seem to be the, uh, what the people determine. You know, who are, who are we in government to dictate land use, or determine authorized uses of land? I agree, there needs to be plans, and it makes sense to spend money on a plan, but, you know, just over the course of my career, seeing this from all these different directions, that's, that's kind of the conclusion I've come to.
Thank you. Tim, you have some good points there, and I think that we cannot forget that it's called private property rights. You have the right to do what you want with your land and develop it how you want, one step at a time, and going through the steps like they're going through right now. You don't ever give up private property rights, period.
Anything else? Approval of claims is up next.
I just have, I'm going to make a motion. There's, there's a number of claims, which I was given some information right before the meeting about. So I'm not a hundred percent sure if what I was given matches the claims, but it has to do with some claims related to appraisals at the Four Hundred East, One Hundred South roundabout. So I'm just going to make a motion that we approve the claims, just subject to verifying that what I was given matches what's on the claims.
Is that the eminent domain work?
Yeah.
So do we, that needs to be-
We have court orders on that, so I can verify that. I can absolutely give him the documentation to verify it, their court orders.
So this is not for all claims, it's only for that?
Correct.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. Second.
We were not given a court order, so. Prepay was, claims was not.
Right.
You'll see the invoices, but no-
Yeah, I mainly just want, I'm just mainly-
Send it to the highway department.
Yeah.
He, he is legally obligated to pay to the clerk, so how-
Right.
Whatever mechanism has to take place and how. Just trying to get the property into our possession.
Yeah.
But those, we don't have a court order for those claims.
Yeah, I was mainly wanting to, it's like in four different spots. It was just very confusing. I was, and then this, and then this doesn't really, it's, this doesn't match exactly what's in the claims. It might be correct, but I just wasn't sure.
And there's three different pending eminent domains, and then there's three appraisers per eminent domain ordered by the court. So yes, I acknowledge it can be confusing.
Yeah.
I'll provide the court orders. Sorry? Was there? Okay, then just call for a vote.
Yes.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. I didn't, I didn't vote on that. I wanted to see what it is. It's still carrying, that's fine. Commissioners comments?
Um, I'm just, I want to make one comment. We, we got some notices. Looks like starting yesterday. I'm just going to read this, because it's pretty short, but it says, notice and point of clarity, do people have all power? It's sent to a whole bunch of people, looks like all over the state. And we were included, so it's Boone County, Boone County Council. But it says, I, and then a name, whoever signed it. One of the people has seen the Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One. Republican informs suing jurors to present you this notice, so that you do provide, do care. Please take notice, I, as one of the people, wish for you to give a point of clarity based on your position as a sworn trustee, if you agree that all power is inherent in the people. Please take notice that Indiana Constitution, Article One, Section One reads, "We declare that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that all power is inherent in the people, and that all free governments are and have right ought to be founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and well-being. For the advancement of these ends, the people have at all times an indefeasible right to alter and reform their government. Please respond publicly within ten business days with clarity in regard to your understanding if all power comes from the people or not." So since there's a request or a response to respond publicly, or request to respond publicly, I'm going to do it at this meeting. And I kind of explained this last year when we were getting notices, but government doesn't have any power except for what is granted in constitutions. It says right in Article One, Section One, "All power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are and have right ought to be founded on their authority." So people reserve all power to themselves. There are certain powers that are prohibited that affect people's rights. Government can't do anything that affects people's rights. And government can't wave a magic wand and sprinkle imaginary power on themselves if it's something that is not covered in the constitution. So that's my response to this notice. I don't know if Scott or Donnie, if you want to make a response. But that's my response.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Any other commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Who's next?
Thank you all for coming.